On record, one moment please. We're ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for April 13th, 2022 at 6 o'clock PM, or after 6 o'clock, right now. We're in the city council chambers, 345 High Street. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Here.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nav.
Present.
Lauer.
Here.
Okay. Rest off and offer a prayer. Captain Joel Lauer, Father of the Pledge of the Religions, we stand and be your.
Dear Lord, please guide us through our business at hand. Bless our work and please provide comfort to all those who are affected by the current world conditions over in the Ukraine. We pray in your name.
Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of the Religions is to the blood of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We're starting off with special presentations. And is my video keyed up?
Yes.
All right. Let me go ahead and bring up Tony Brown first. And is anybody else here from your family, Tony?
Yeah.
All right, come on up.
They're all working right now, aren't they?
One of them is.
All right, I'm up here. Over the holidays, I, a group had a holiday party there. It's a bunch of these retired disc jockeys, they live in the WOH. It was really a lot of fun. And Tony's dad says, oh, by the way, we're now more than eight years old now. So All Aid Up is more than eight years old. Plus the fact that they, they were one of the first folks who did the downtown revitalization. I know, it must be Ryan, your father was probably the first to get things rolling. But soon thereafter, Tony Brown and his wife and cat just took a chance and it is, it's expanding their hours, their days open. And it's a video, I think, that Jeff Archibald put together. Can we play that?
Of course.
All Aid Up has started as an idea that turned into so much more than we ever thought it would be. With the support of Hamilton, we have grown and we are now one of the best places to eat in downtown Hamilton.
We are hidden gem, but we're proud of that. We don't advertise. We do a lot of community work with some, with some charities to raise them money, but that's pretty much our only advertisement we do.
American Italian. So we have sandwiches, we have calzones, we have pizzas, salads. Our salads are always made fresh with freshly thawed lettuce. So we try to keep the menu simple, yet friendly.
I'd say try a calzone. It's served with, with three toppings of your choice. And there's two different butter recipes used to, to make it. And when people try a calzone at All Aid Up, they're, they're usually pretty pleased.
We have, I think, seven different types of hoagies. And then we have a special butter sauce that we put on top of the hoagie when it's finished. They're made to order. We have nothing pre-cooked for you. So it's made just the way you like it.
We have people who eat either one day a week. They'll come in on Mondays. We have people that eat three days a week here. Lunches, we have a pretty loyal crowd of people who work downtown.
Lots of repeat customers. And lots of customers that are telling their friends and families, hey, you have to go check this place out if you haven't.
They've proven that they do want to come downtown to eat pizza. And then since the extra things have opened up downtown with the breweries and the, and the bars and the pinball garage, it's neat to see people come down for other reasons, just to eat our pizza.
We came in when there was not much here downtown, just a few other places, but the ideas were happening.
People should know that when the food's made here, it's, I think it's made with a little extra love than you would get at other places.
Hamilton has done nothing but grow and improve, and we love being a part of that.
We definitely are a part of it. As you can tell, Tony's a graduate of Dayton High School. I think that was your varsity jacket when your team won state championship. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
If you're not hungry right now, I'm not sure what's wrong. It really makes me hungry right now. You'll see their delivery folks all over the place, especially during lunch hour. And they cut this building quite a bit. That's great for us and a great for you folks too. Anything you want to say? Have some special routine?
No, just that it's been a great opportunity in Hamilton to serve people food. And it's great that the city supports us. A lot of people in here I've seen eating in my place or ordering food by phone for delivery. And it's just really neat to be a part of Hamilton and its growth. After growing up here as a kid and seeing a little bit of a decline, and now everything going on, the up and up again, it's pretty cool.
Well, you're a part of it. All right. We have a certificate of recognition. City Hamilton, Ohio, has certified All Aid Up, is served by word, certificate of recognition for downtown investment and predates absolutely great food. Thank you, Hamilton residents, Tony and Kat Brown, for creating All Aid Up in December of 2013, and being pioneers of Hamilton's downtown revitalization. The restaurant has grown from weekday lunch only to lunch evenings and Monday through Saturday service. For pizza, calzones, gourmet hoagies, salads and more. We value you and your success. Thank you for your commitment to Hamilton, Ohio. So myself as mayor and also as members of council. All right? And I sent the idea to all these council.
I gotta get back to work.
I know you do. Thanks, Tony. Next, we have engineering projects update from the Department of Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city citizens of Hamilton. I'm going to bring you an update on the Train Depot relocation. If you recall, this is the proposed site of the new location on city property. There's two separate structures. The multi-story is the one further to the north and the single story is the one to the south. Currently, those two structures have a connecting building between the two with a roof and that will not be relocated. This is just going to be the two main historic structures. So just running through the tasks we've completed so far, the cleaning out of the basement of the two-story building. CSX has started that process. They started earlier this week on Monday. Removing the chimney and removing the connecting structure between the two buildings and also removing the chimney on the single-story structure. That project is out for quotes at the moment and they're due back on Friday this week. Anything highlighted in yellow is an estimated cost and anything in blue is actual a cost that has been issued as a purchase order. So we know which ones are estimated and which ones are firm costs at the moment. Also, we have a contractor, Coon Restoration, that will be removing, I'm sorry, providing the bracing in the windows and door openings prior to the move. They, that has to be done in order to keep the structure stable when they're lifting it and moving it. That project is scheduled to begin next week and they anticipate to be done in two weeks to have that complete. Also, there was erosion control that the city would be doing and that's a minimal cost of approximately $5,000. I think I jumped ahead. Yes. Also, because the multi-story building has a basement underneath it, we will have to fill that with gravel before the movers can relocate it so that they can drive over it with their, use it for the bracing and lifting up of the structure and also for moving it with their dollies. And that's an estimated cost as well. We have to make sure the route is clear. I need to schedule the wolf movers, the moving company to come in and make sure that we know exactly what power poles, what streetlights, possible trees will have to be removed before they can relocate the structures. And since we're dealing with CSX, they require that we enter into an agreement with them and also provide a purchase order. And that's in the amount of approximately $42,000. And then they will use that money for their engineering. They will also use it for any flagging and other costs associated with the relocation. We'll have to dispose of some of the excavated material and debris that's left over. The actual relocation of the buildings, the original bid was $360,000. And because of the timeframe of getting the foundations constructed and getting the buildings moved by the CSX deadline of May 31st, we will have to move the buildings and store them on the site prior to actually setting them over the foundation. And then once the foundations are completed and the concrete is cured, then the buildings can be set over the foundations. They will be still elevated above the foundation and then the foundation company will install cement unit, brick or block to go from the top of the concrete foundation to the underside of the structures. So that's how the, and then once that is done, then the movers will remove all their supports and the buildings will be resting on the new foundation and the new concrete blocks. But because of that, because the timing is not the way we had anticipated earlier, we will be paying extra cost for the movers, first of all, to expedite the move and also for them to store it and come back and remobilize to set them on the foundations. The contract for the construction of the foundations was awarded to Lithgow Restoration in the amount of $548,600. And that does not include the basement on the multi-story. Both buildings will be on concrete slab. And then we've also obtained estimates for doing the plumbing, HVAC for both buildings. Plumbing was 100, I'm sorry, for the multi-story building is $158,000 and for the single-story building is $151,000. And then we have an estimate for the parking lot of $130,000. And then just essentially at the end of day today, I received a quote, a budget estimate, let me rephrase that, a budget estimate for the window replacement and door replacement on both buildings of $275,000. So that's another number you can add into that. I'll update my table and send it off to you tomorrow. And then to date, we've spent approximately $50,000 on engineering and geotech and some inspection work that we've done at the moment. So without the $275,000, the cost to date is about $1.6 million. And then future work, I'm still waiting on a quote for the roof replacement on the multi-story building. I was expected to get that by Friday. We have concrete floors in both buildings that are included in the quote by Lithgow Restoration. It would be my suggestion that we wait on any concrete floor placement until we get the utilities in and decide how the building's going to be utilized before we finish up on concrete flooring. We need to extend the utilities yet, replace doors and windows, and that's obviously in the list of tasks. Tuck pointing of the building, providing the heating, ventilation and cooling units. And again, it would be better to wait until we know exactly how the usage of the building will be. We'll need restroom facilities. The building interior restoration. And also, just for everyone's information, the Coon Restoration is also going to be salvaging the tin ceilings that I think most of you saw when you were in the buildings. Are there any questions?
Well, your numbers, from whom would you get the $275,000? Was it bid out or something or what? The windows?
Yeah, eventually we'll have to do that. That was not a bid. That was a budgetary estimate.
And who made that estimate?
That was through a company that Coon Restoration works with. I don't recall the name of the company off the top of my head.
And these estimates, are they in writing or is it just something that you're being told?
Well, I have an email and writing, yes. But I haven't talked to the estimator who sent me that information. So I have no information to share as to what that includes, what that means as far as windows. I just asked them to give me a budgetary estimate on what the windows of that era might, might cost. I was just trying to get numbers together so that council knows where we are in the budgetary process.
And Daniel, could we go back to the line items?
Which, which, which one would you like to go to?
Just any of them that don't have a number concern me. Estimates concern me. And you said that right now we're at 1.6 million. Is that just with firm numbers?
No, that's with estimates plus firm numbers. And that does not include the windows. So if you add the windows in, we're closer to 1.9 million.
Rich?
Yeah.
So when I look at this list, I think there are 10 items that are to be determined. And then everything that's in the yellow could change, whether it's higher or lower. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So at this point, we really only have firm numbers for 20% of this project. Is that fair?
I would say it's higher than that, only because the costs are much higher. For instance, the, we're probably at 50 to 55% firm numbers at the moment.
Okay. And I have no idea what some of these other items, but is it possible this could go up to 3 million to move it? I mean, you said we're pretty much up to 1.9. So add another million. Would that be fair?
It depends on how finished you want the buildings after they're moved. When we established that $2 million estimate over nearly a year ago now, we were just trying to make sure the council understood the magnitude of the project and what it would cost to get the buildings moved. But we were hoping and thought we could get it in a better finished condition, white box, as Joshua phrased it. But it doesn't appear like we're going to get to that point.
And there, at one point, there was a discussion about a basement. And so we're not doing a basement in this. We're doing a, I don't know, crawl space, just a foundation?
It's just a concrete slab. Yes, correct.
Just a slab. So no basement at all?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So when do we think we might have firm numbers? The goal is to have this moved by May 31st? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That's the deadline that CSX has given the city to get the buildings moved. I don't believe we're going to meet that final deadline of May 31st. I think we'll be past that, but we will be well underway in May to get the buildings moved.
Without, without firm numbers, though. That's what you're saying? We're going to go ahead and do it without firm numbers?
Well, without, we have firm numbers on getting it moved. It's just the rest, the restoration and the renovation is going to take to get them usable.
Rich, excuse me, just for clarity, the highlighting in yellow, do you expect all of those, I think, Susan, you mentioned there are 10 that are highlighted. I didn't count. Do you expect all of those highlights to be clarified this coming Friday?
No, I do not.
Okay. How many of the 10 might be supplied to you this coming Friday?
I would say probably four.
Okay.
We'll have the windows, which we got today. But again, that's just a budgetary estimate that I need to get more clarification on from the company that provided that. We will have quotes, firm quotes, to do the demolition of the connecting structure, as I call it, and also the two chimneys. I think those numbers are, well, I'm not going to say. I think the chimney numbers are high, but I'm, I'm not sure based on what the requirements for CSX insurance is going to affect our demolition companies. And then the, what was the other one? The numbers for the HVAC are probably pretty firm because I had a consulting engineer look at those and provide us those estimates. So yeah, I would say those are the numbers we'll have. Oh, and the roof for the multi-story, I'm expecting to get that by Friday. So that will be another addition to the, to the list.
And Rich, do you have any idea what that is? Or are you waiting for a firm number on the roof?
I would prefer to wait, please.
So what do we do when this goes over $2 million?
Mr. Mayor, I had a question though. That might help, you know, help or whatever, but it's for Joshua or Rich, either way. Do we have any other alternatives of looking at any funding that we can go after? Is there other, do we have anybody interested that possibly we don't have to put the money into the building that maybe an interested party can put the money into rather than the city? I mean, there's, there's still other avenues, isn't there, that we can go after for funding?
Yeah. So I mean, just to clarify, so when Rich said, the money, we have enough money to pick it up and move it. The question now becomes, council has appropriated $2 million for this. Just looking at Rich's numbers, you can see that after it is moved, we'll be able to do some, some minimal work to the exterior of the building and then we will extinguish that $2 million. So to council member Pullman's question about, you know, what options we have, our hope, nine months ago, seven months ago, whenever it was when we had this conversation, I think it was October of last year, it was that we would be able to put this into a gray or white box condition. So that way, if a pizza place, a microbrewery, whatever showed up, it would be very close for them to come in. They would put in their kitchen. They would do whatever and it would be converted. Based on the numbers that, that Rich is presenting tonight, we're going to pick up the building. We're going to put it on a new foundation. We're going to do some minimal work to the exterior as much as we can to protect it from the elements. And without any further appropriation from council, we're going to have to rely on exactly what he just said. It's going to have to be grant funding. It's going to have to be fundraising. It's going to have to be, maybe a restaurant comes in and they have to do more of the work instead of the city doing a lot of the work for them. But yes, I mean, those would be the options. I mean, we can't spend more money until council, it would have to come back to council for a further appropriation.
And I'm hoping that once we move this thing over here, it shows people that we are serious, that we moved it and there's an investment possibility, especially with Maple Avenue, as we're working on Maple Avenue with the, the, forgot the name, AMP. Thank you. Long day. You know, with that, I think there's going to be a compliment. That's going to be a compliment maybe to Maple Avenue. So I'm just thinking that once we move it over there, can we, can we have other people? I believe there's people really just going to jump on it, in my, in my opinion.
Well, I think, I mean, there were people lined up here before saying they're raising money. And has anything happened in nine months where any money has been raised? Has anybody gathered to say, save the water tower or, you know, or are we, and since this is an ever-moving, changing project anyway, is that still the only location we can move it to?
Well, I mean, the wheels are in motion to put it there. We would never meet CSX's deadline if we, well, I guess unless we stored it somewhere for, try to store it somewhere for a period of time. But.
Correct. But that would be a cost and an expense as well.
I have a question again, Caroline, for you. You don't think that's a good location? I'm just asking. You don't, you don't like the location?
I don't like the location for, one big reason is because our office is on the sixth floor of the First Financial Bank Building. We actually have to put people on hold sometimes because of the trains that come through here every 22 minutes with their horn blaring.
I understand that.
And that's why I asked Rich what the difference was. How far away was this building? Because our office is 1,075 feet from the railroad tracks and we hear it like it's coming through our office. I can't imagine an office, a business, whatever, being, didn't you say the closest is 325 feet and the farthest, farthest is 375 feet from the railroad tracks? Did I read that wrong?
275 and 220, I think is what it was.
Or two, yeah.
Yeah, I think they were.
So, I mean, to me, I know everybody thinks, I don't want to save this building. And well, everybody, you're wrong. That's not the case. It's, it's the way that we're doing it that bothers me. I think it'd be great if we could save it. I think it'd be great, not great, but if it turns out we couldn't save it and could save parts of it to put in Amtrak or someplace else. But the location to me and how we're just doing this, so we hope with estimates coming through, I, I, I don't, that's what I think is wrong. That's what bothers me is I just, I don't think somebody's going to come in and want to be that close to a railroad track with a business.
I'd say a few things. I like looking at the numbers and trying to shave them up a little bit. You said windows from that era, $275,000. I'm not quite sure what that means. I'm not sure if there's estimates. It might be a little bit less than that.
I, I believe there could be, Mayor. And that's why I wanted to talk to the, I wanted you to be aware of it because I got it yet today after I had given the presentation. But I do want to have a conversation with them and see if there's other more viable options that we could pursue that we could possibly save half of that.
I mean, I know we, we did some shaving already. We did not put a basement into this.
Correct.
Move, correct? And I think that added up to $200,000 approximately.
More than 200,000. Yes, sir.
I'd like to look at some of these and continue to shave them and see where that, that takes us. I, I know when you, when you got the measurements, Carl, I thought, I thought it was interesting that you did that. I'm glad that you did that. I'm thinking that, I'm, I'm pretty close to a railroad track in my law office. And actually, I walked my dog and started pacing it off a little bit. I'm a little bit more than, than that a way. But AMP Brewery will be pretty close to it as well. Beckett Paper Buildings, pretty close to it as well. Armory, real close to it as well. McDonald's is right there. And yet, you know, you hear the train, but, you know, it's just part of something that just passes. And, you know, I, it's just one of those things. We, we've had trains come through our city for, well, obviously, ever. Yeah, Lord knows when it actually started.
I think we built the city around a train track. We didn't, I think that's what we did, so.
So I'm, I'm looking at where, what we can do, the cost contained here. I know we, we want to do basic service as well. That's hugely important. And I hear about the streets and I drive the streets. We want to keep doing basic service as well. But I mean, this is something that, it's history and I think we have to give it every smart opportunity we can to see what we can do with this for real. I mean, I know what the budget is. I do know of a group or two that, that does have some money, but it's not tens of thousands of dollars. But I'm hoping that when it does move, if it does move, when it does move, that, that will spur some interest because you start getting more of a vision when it's on Maple Avenue. Avenue, as you try and repurpose and change all of Maple Avenue, than where it's at right now. Where it's right now, it's tough to envision it, is how I think.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Will Architectural Designer Review Board have to approve changes? So when you say not replacing with historic windows, would that be the case, that we'll be under the mandate of you have to?
I'm not, I cannot answer that question. Liz, can you offer any insight?
But it can be overridden through the BCA? Sorry, I'm an old BCA member, right? Okay, I was just double checking.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, this, this might be helpful. Rich, if, the cost of the relocation of the depot before any improvements are made, just so maybe council can have a, like, a clear understanding from a budgetary perspective, is that 1.4, 1.5 million?
Just to relocate it?
Yes. That, that's the foundation, the storage, all the costs up to the point we put it on the new foundation.
No, it's less than a million.
So how much money is left to actually improve it once it's placed on a new foundation?
Well, the remainder of the budgeted $2 million, so probably estimated another million to do so.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if that's helpful to me to, so, my, I think my calculation came in a little bit higher just to pick it up and move it, but I'll trust your number called $1 million to put it on a foundation. That still leaves $1 million of appropriated funds than to actually improve that building. And that's where I think council's gonna have to make some policy decisions, you know, what's more important, the new roof or parking lot, windows or something else. We have to itemize everything that's outstanding and then prioritize from there and figure out what the remaining balance will get us to. The second thing I was gonna say, I was thinking about the, the proximity of the, the rail tracks. I'm not sure if you've ever eaten at the Iron Horse in Glendale, or I think it's now called the Meritage, but I, actually, I think it's sort of cool when trains come by when you're eating there, but that's just, maybe that's just me, not with an office.
I don't think they come through as often as they do here. It's just, but...
They said 35 times a day when I was down there, because I asked, but I know, I, I think you're right. I think we get about 60 trains a day in Hamilton on that line, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I understand that you and the city manager are gonna be heading to Chicago to meet with Amtrak officials. When they were here, they are interested in, in this depot. They like the fact that we are preparing a site for potential stops, and there might be some funding from them available that they might be able to help us out with to get this refurbished if the talks go in that direction. There is station funding available, and I think that's maybe something we can inquire about when you guys go up there, let them know the situation we're in, and it doesn't hurt to ask, if I'm not mistaken, there might be some funding in there for this type of situation. I'd like to start that conversation now myself.
So, so what you're kind of proposing, Joshua, is that just moving it is gonna be $1 million, maybe a little less? And then we will prioritize what needs to be done within that $2 million?
Yes.
I mean, I, oh, hell, everybody knows how I feel about it, so I'm not gonna mince words, and I'm, and I do want to see it succeed, but just like, I just can't believe we're playing what if. I mean, like, with all due respects to Amtrak saying, hey, we like that you're doing that, they're not paying for it. They're, it, it, there's just so much unknown about here that I still cannot believe that this is, this is acceptable at a time like this, but...
Mr. Mayor, one thing, just one more thing. I, I keep going back to what I heard when I first got elected here, that you guys trust Joshua 100%. And I try, I'm, I'm gonna go by what y'all said, you, and that he's gonna, you need to just do it. He's gonna, I think he's gonna sell that building, I think he's gonna sell that to developer, or he's gonna find a good developer. And I, I think in the two and a half years that I've been here, I've gained a lot of trust in what this team does, and I'm, I'm banking on that. So, I mean, I heard that from council, that's what they said, was that you trust him 100%. So that's what I'm banking on, too. So I think they can do it, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Just my opinion on it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Eric. So I want to go on record as saying this, there's nothing about this that says I don't trust Joshua. We are the body that have made this decision to move forward with this, excuse me, this investment in the city. And I think it's incumbent on every one of us to make sure that we are being fair, we have investigated this fully, and we know what we're getting into. I wish there was a restaurant or someone that's come forward. I wish there are people out there raising money for this, but I also want to be very honest with them. And when I ask the question about Architectural Designer Review Board, this is one of the most important buildings in this city. Everyone has argued this is the most important. And to suggest that we would bypass that and go to zoning appeals and get an exception and not do what we ask all of our citizens to do, I believe that is absolutely unfair. And so, and I don't expect Liz to have an answer to this today, but before we move forward, if it's an historic building and it costs someone tens of thousands of dollars to put a roof on, that's historic in nature, that's what needs to happen. And we have to be fair and honest about this with everyone. And that's where I feel we are. Joshua supports what council says, all of our residents support what council says, Rich is doing his due diligence here and getting the dollars and the numbers together, and we in the end have to make the final decision.
Well said. Because if it had gone the other way, Joshua, as city manager, would have done just as much to have the demolition and everything done well, so...
I believe that.
You know, that, so I don't think, pinning it on him that now all of a sudden, because it got voted on to, to receive this contribution, now it's up to the city manager to make it right?
I'm just, I'm just trying to trust the motive.
If I may, I, I would strongly urge all of us, because it is a body of seven that make the decisions, and our, our administration follows those decisions based on, on public support and what we're hearing. I heard, I heard a lot of support. I heard some people say, as, as we've heard tonight, that there were bodies that said we will come forward with some financial help. It might be tens of thousands of dollars, not necessarily hundreds or millions of dollars. We can hope for that. We can hope that, that the gentlemen that were visiting, that visited with us from Amtrak were, were truthful in what they shared, that there are billions of dollars being invested in Amtrak stations. That's on the hope. I'm not comfortable with what we saw up here and what Rich sent us last week in the estimates, that if that $20,000 is shaved to 15, if there's, I believe there was a $50 million, or, I'm sorry, $50,000 in, in yellow, maybe one of the other pages. If that can be shaved to 40, then all of a sudden that $1 million carryover from moving it to the site and having them be ready for some sort of restoration. We've had entities say we would like to potentially look at space. We haven't had any promise yet from an outside interest. But I would dare to say if we get those ready for an outside interest and, and to be white-walled and/or somewhat ready, that those outside interests would invest in them. We collectively decided 10 years ago that Spooky Nook and taking over what was Champion Smart Paper was the correct thing to do. That's $150 million project versus a $2 to $3 million project here. We have interest from many citizens who say, please move it, don't, don't take it down, don't, don't make piles of bricks out of that, we'll never get them back. So I still, when we voted on this to, to approve moving them back in October, I still believe it's the right thing to do. Are there unknowns? Yes. Do we have to dot the i's and cross the t's and, and have true estimates rather than guesses? Yes. Will the windows be and the doors be 275,000? I hope not, because there are bidding institutions out there, as we found out from Sam and what he's accomplishing at Spooky Nook, there are bidding institutions out there that bid windows and make windows and do things that are appropriate to the era, the roof lines that be established, to be appropriate to the era, and, and hopefully come in on a budget that's acceptable and not push this up north of $3 million. So thank you for letting me share my interest in what I hope will be a great development and could be something that we can be proud of for years to come.
Can I just give an update on the numbers? I just want to make, I think it's just important, this is very clear, before we move on in the discussion. Rich, I just added up what we've, what we have acknowledged just in, in relocation costs. I'm at about a little over 1.1 million. So we would have $800,000 plus to put into the building once it's moved. This is based off your April 8th email to City Council. I'm just reviewing each of those numbers. So I just want to make that number clear. And I'm not saying there, there could be other costs with the relocation that we're just not aware yet, but based on what we already know, we would have, by very quick math, about $880,000 left over to actually put into the building in the site.
Any comments? Rich, I, in my opinion is, we gotta sharpen the pencils up a little bit and see where we can save, 10,000 here, 10,000 there.
Yes, sir.
Because if you get eight or nine or 10 of those, that helps out quite a bit. My new solution is to keep this, obviously, an historic building somehow, try and keep this in, within, within a budget. It is an important building to our history. Have to keep it as close as we can to, to, to a budget that all of our citizens would go. They did the right thing, they sharpened their pencils, and got it done. Other com, other comments?
I just want to clarify, so, so next month, May, we are, it's, it's being moved, or we're still waiting on CSX to, to grant an extension?
They're not gonna grant it?
No, we're scheduling the move next month in May.
Okay.
I don't know what, my hope is the first week of May, but I need to talk to wolf movers to find out what they mean by mobilization and what, how long that's gonna take them to bring all their equipment in and get ready. So it may be second to third week before they actually start.
Okay. That question, so any other questions or comments? Other projects you're gonna be discussing with us today?
No, sir, I thought that would be enough for this evening.
Come on, Rich.
So, can we, can you be back on the agenda in two weeks to update and show us less yellow, more blue?
Yes. If you would like updates at every council meeting, I'd be glad to do so.
I would.
And as you may have noticed or not, Lithgow's actually started their work at the new site, removing the asphalt pavement and getting ready to start the foundations.
Thank you, Rich.
Rich, if at all possible, when you get numbers, can you give them to council?
Yes, sir. As soon as I get updates, I will provide them.
Just keep revising what you have there.
Okay.
If you could, because I'm familiar, I think I have it memorized.
You have that, okay.
Every line, so you could just...
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're not going to audience, we're not going to audience of citizens. And individuals who wish to make comments may do so during this part of the agenda, or they may speak prior to there being a vote on council floor. Individuals who wish to address council are required to sign this public speaking book that I have in front of me. Speakers allowed up to five minutes. And at the sign-in time, we have got one, two, three, four people who've signed the book. We have Maria Boykin first.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Boykin. I've been a resident, born and raised here in the city of Hamilton. I've been here about a year ago to complain about the area that I live in. I've been living here since 1971. The rental property behind me is 340 11th Street. They made the city come out, made them put in a slab and warned about the parking, da 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 da. Fast forward. On 25th, I came out, moved my car. My garage had been hit. A chunk of it is gone. Turned it over to the insurance company. Strangely, no vans, no trailers, no loud music, it's all gone. I can't prove they hit my car, I was home in bed. Final situation will start to begin. I'd asked an official about the noise, can't get a sign in about all the noise. It starts, it goes on to 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, you would not believe it. Those railroad tracks, there's nothing compared to this noise. The city allows anything to go on there. I called about the parking, Kami whatever says they're allowed to park two cars there. That's a joke. It went on for a little while, and it was back to two or three cars, trailers, vans. Now they got about 30 rabbits over here. They get out when they want to get out, and they run over everywhere. They got a food truck that's gigantic that the city hammered down, they had one in the courthouse that big, as big as what they got in the yard. Now you can imagine, they're gonna pull it out there, try to use it, they're gonna damage something else. They're starting to work on my garage now. But I want something, I want on record, that I've been up here to complain about it. It's gonna happen again, they're gonna run to something, because they got all, a kind of a construction material, roofing. They're gonna come back to get that, and they're gonna bring a truck and a trailer to get it, guarantee you. And they're gonna hit something else. They already took out a chunk of my garage. I have pictures, the insurance company's been called, and I want on record, I want something done about it. I feel that the city has neglected that part of town, it's mostly all rental now, and it's some landlords, they let anything go on. It's ridiculous. And I want to take up the rest of your time, but I want in record, on the record. I'm sure some officials gonna come out there while I feed my birds, and come walk through your yard and see if it helps itself. It'll go on about a couple days or a week, and it's over. But it's gonna still be the same thing, it's just terrible. Come to the corner of Walnut and East Avenue. That's all the homeless, crackheads, and whatever else is out there. You're talking about Maple Avenue, that railroad track crossing? That's a joke. Go one block over. And it's terrible. Down to Garcia, Garcia's Grocery Store, they got two houses that'll be condemned, should have been condemned. You should see them. And it's next to a grocery store. It's like the city dump. Two houses. They tore down a house that was being renovated, didn't look, didn't look that bad, they had been working on. But these two houses, some reason, they let them stay there. You can't miss it. If they go out there tomorrow, they can't clean it up in a day. One big, you can't do is knock it down. Oh, thank you for your time, and I'll be back probably about, I'll give it a month. They'll be back for that stuff on the porch, that roofing and stuff. Thank you for your time.
May I ask?
Please, stay up there for a second, I want to say something to you, but go ahead, please.
Do you happen to have email, access to email?
Yes.
Where you could make a report on 311? I mean, they're really trying, the city is trying so hard to have a lot of these comments go through, through 311, because that way they can track it better, it's more accountable, you'd be able to look at it, see if you have an answer. So I appreciate and respect you being here, and I love when things can go on the record that way. But if it is at all possible for you to put this, or no, what's the call now? My, it's not 311, my Hamilton portal.
She can do, she can do this at the service desk, I think, too.
I mean, we're really trying to get people, we love you being here, thank you.
The last time I was at the city building, I got a parking ticket, because I parked in front of the building, and I thought it was gonna be the... in front of the building, and I thought it was gonna be to run in and pay this and just go out, go outside. I went from the county side to the city side, I don't know. They just put me down here yesterday. I don't know, I don't know.
Well, if you could just consider it.
Actually, Aaron Hufford would be willing to put a lot of this into the system for you. He'll walk outside with you when you're done this evening.
I've had them follow me home. The situation still exists, oh, the police department. Yeah, they said, I got a phone call, we have someone consider helping you take your fence down, and you get more room to get in your car. Now, I've been here since 71, I had a problem getting in my yard, and now I'm gonna take the fence down so I can get in, and they can have more room to put their trailers in? I would you come over to my place? You talk about noise in your office? Come over to my house, railroad track. I'll tell you about noise, how long they tie it up, and we got more tracks since we got the underpass than we ever had trains in the city.
I'm gonna say a few things now. About a year or so ago, there were a bunch of cars, and I went up to the house, and it was like across the alley, a bunch of cars, work cars. And I think, she, Bukat may have gone out there, or possibly Public Safety Director Scormesi went out there. And I think, you said that there were lots, and it was just a mess, they were parking all their, their work vehicles.
It's still there.
Every single one of them, I thought it got cleaned up for a while.
Oh, they just left when my car, my truck, my garage got hit, everybody said, boom. You don't see them. The Humney-whatever Hummer, it's supposed to be Jeep, all that's gone. The trailer, little silver trailer that goes up and down, it's all gone.
The longer it's a problem, the longer it's a problem of all the work vehicles being right across the alley. That issue is no longer an issue then.
I guess not.
Okay.
They ended up knocking my garage down, I leave too.
So, the solution is, what do you think?
Sight them, hit their pocket. By the time we talk to them, I don't like that $10 parking ticket, sight them.
Right. Mr. Hufford, it's possible you can talk to Ms. Boykin about some of the things he has shared with us this evening.
Thanks, Mayor.
It's gonna be interesting, I'm sure.
Thank you for coming and speaking with us. All right, we're gonna put Jim Lottman next. Jim Lottman?
Good evening. I wanted to complain about that B Street on the railroad tracks, it's getting worse over there now. Railroad tracks getting worse, people running around and stuff like that, you know. It's really a bitch, and when they gonna fix that railroad tracks?
Well, that's a CSX issue, Rich? When something gets fixed, is the railroad?
East Avenue?
No, I thought you said...
B Street, yes.
Sorry.
He meant East Avenue. Getting a little confused. What, what are you asking to be fixed, when? Where? Where at?
Going right from High Street, going right straight on, going south on.
I think he's talking about Maple.
Really, yeah, very near, I'm pretty sure.
Rich, are you, are you, okay.
Okay. Also, I got here, Dan Hancock got this letter from, he doesn't know who it's from, and I'd like you to read it, if you could. It's a very, very personal, personal letter from, talking about me too in there.
What I'd like to do is maybe have you get that to the city clerk, and then we'll take a look at it. I don't think, our policy is evolving to something where we want our clerk to see things before it comes to us, and it's just for a number of smart reasons. I have no idea what's in your hands right now.
What?
Is that something that you drafted, or who drafted it?
Dan, Dan, he got it for me.
It's me anonymously.
Okay.
It's about someone I watched complaining about the city, you know, I mean, but we're not complaining about the...
Well, my, give it to the city clerk, okay?
Yeah, okay, I'm saying, also...
We'll resolve it that way.
Also, when I'm saying about that, is, that, Hillary wrote this letter, who wouldn't even sign it, and Dan got it, but it's pretty bad, I mean, he ain't gonna bother to talk to us in person, I guess, he ain't gonna bother to write this stuff.
Okay. Jim, leave it up to the city clerk, would you please, and then, and be careful, because I know you wear your sunglasses indoors still, so just be careful if you're around the room, but give that paper to the city clerk, okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
This is gonna be my new chorus. Jim, do you have access to a computer that you can send some of these comments to my Hamilton so that they can be, could you maybe start doing that as well?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're next, Dan.
Okay. Next, we have Dan Fenfrock. You wish to speak, Dan? Now, Dan, I called you up and informed you we were gonna be discussing cost tonight about the railroad, and I thought there's something that you ought to at least hear, the cost that we are facing right now. So, if there'll be no vote tonight, I thought you ought to know the cost that we were facing, and if you want to comment about that, or wait until we get some more firm costs, I'm okay with that too.
Well, there's a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
One is...
First off, give us your name and your address.
One is to...
Well, first off, give us your name and your address.
Oh, Dan Fenfrock, 5198 DeAlva Drive, Fairfield. Like to make a comment to Carla. Down at Sharon Road at the railroad crossing, there is a tavern right there that serves excellent meals, they have a deck up on top, which is just at the level where the horns are on the railroad. In the summertime, that place is packed with people to watch those trains. I'm hoping that happens here too.
I hope it does too.
Okay, another thing is, being a rail fan, I'm known by a lot of people. My phone has rung off the wall. I don't know whether you people on city council realize it or not, what a glass house you are living in. I have received calls from Goodyear, Arizona, what's the status of the station? I received Marion, Ohio, Champagne, Illinois. I got a call this morning from Knoxville, Tennessee, where Scott says, what's the status of the station, I'd like to tell the people here. What I would like to know is, who do I go to? Because rail fans make up a lot of things. I think the people that are kind of rail fans on the council here realize that. And some people, I've heard gloom and doom this week, I've heard wonderful things. Who can I go to to get an update periodically so I can tell the rail fan people exactly what's going on?
First off, you can come to council meetings if you want to. Those dollar figures, is that public record, Rich?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, you can get the dollar figures when we get the dollar figures, somebody can share them with you. I mean, you'll see what the process is and what we're going through.
Well, it's just not, not particularly the dollar, but the progress report.
Well, actually, the spreadsheet has dates on it.
Okay.
Of when things, we hope that they occur, and when one thing's already started occurring, they clean some of the old papers, some of the furniture, I believe, out of it the last couple of days.
Okay.
So, there's, it's, it's a sheet of dollar numbers, it's also got dates on it.
Yeah, what I want to do is make sure that everybody's on the same pattern so that it actually, I think, helps you all out by people knowing what's going on rather than the gloom and doom and the, you know, great things and so forth like that. So, okay, that's what I was...
And I'll tell you what, if they have any insight...
Yeah.
On grants or want to help donate to what we're trying to do, that would be ideal.
Now, one last thing.
Okay.
I walked out, not where I was supposed to, where the new foundation is going in, and I stepped off, and you are within 100 feet of where the first ticket was sold by Earhart back in 1854 at Caldwell and Ford Street. The station is in an ideal spot historically. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
He needs contact, Dan. I can give you my number directly, and I'll give him my number, and I can relay what we hear on council, if that's okay with council, because, yes, I'm a rail fan, that's who he's talking about, so it's, and I kind of understand what he's talking about, but give him, that's my part, and Dan, that's my personal number on it.
Okay.
Feel free to call me on it, and I'll update you with what I can, okay?
At Summer Rail, they come from all over the United States to come to that.
Because my phone too has been burned out.
And, you know, we could give a report there and solve a lot of problems.
Yeah, there's, I understand about the rail fanning, there's people calling wanting to know to come to town to see it move, so, you know, there'll be quite a few people, I think, so.
Thank you all. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Lastly, Dick Shid. And as I said to Mr. Fenfrock, you've heard a few things tonight. I did contact Historic Hamilton because it's on their agenda each and every month about the fact we're gonna talk about some of the costs tonight. I listened to the prior meeting a couple of months ago, that things came back higher than what we expected. So, with that as an introduction, tell us what you want, what you want us to hear.
Okay, good evening, honorable mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Richard Shid, I'm a retired teacher, lifelong Hamiltonian, and a 25, proud, dear resident, president of Linewall neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak to you in support of the railroad project, and I guess, looking at our history, there are several things that are main drivers of Hamilton's project, progress. First would be the location by General St. Clair of the fort on the Miami River on the shallow ford, so that's the reason we're here, here. The second would be the hydraulic canal, which provided power for the first industries, the fledgling industries of Hamilton, and most of that is gone. There is a canal that worked north of the city, but not a whole lot in the city, it's all gone. Thirdly would be the Miami and Erie Canal, which provided transport for all our goods and manufactured goods, and there's not anything left of that. And the railroad came last, and it was the main driver for freight and commerce and passengers, and we got a station still. Historic Railroad Station dates from the 1850s, it stands still as a monument to our growth and our history. Let's save it for future generations and let it tell its story. Don't knock it down so it can't enlighten future generations of where Hamilton came from and what Hamilton is. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Okay, that does take care of our audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that's matters such as all staff reports and all caucus reports. And are we prepared to go into committee to hold, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion for a committee to be recessed, and then committee to hold take place.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion for Councilmember Pullman, so my councilmember Fear. All of the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The time is 7:05. Please commence with the...
Committee to hold. Our first presentation will be by our Director of Utility Operations, Bill Hudson, for agenda item number one, related to a waiving of a single source supplier.
Good evening, Council Mayor, since Hamilton. Mayor, to discuss using Minside ACS, continue using them as the sole source provider of our electric SCADA system. Our system as it is now was first installed in 2008. Between 2009 and 2015, we did full integration into the system with the original, original system. 2015, we did our first big upgrade, added a redundant server, it made it more reliable that if we had an issue, we weren't going completely blind. 2017, came integration with a multi-speak system, which we could talk to the outage management system, so when the phone call came in, it could go right to the system, and we know exactly what was out and who, and increase our response time and reliability. 2019, we started, we upgraded all the NTX, which is the computer controls at each substation, so the original 2008 was replaced with 2019 version. Again, standard upgrades, something we have to do to maintain a modern system to keep everything going, in its life cycle. Last year, we upgraded the fiber network for the communication between all the new boxes, which was quicker, we can have more information, and was just our next step in the upgrade in new routers. All right, the reason for the next upgrade is that in 2015 was last time the aging servers, and that were replaced, so we're due for an upgrade with the servers, all the hardware, the stations that the actual controllers use. There's new security concerns with the older software now with NERC reliability standards and all the cyber things we're worried about. We need it latest and greatest so we can have the best protection we can have on the system so no one can hack it. And update reporting function, so when we have to report stuff to various regulatory agencies, it's a simple use update for a report, there's nothing special now, you can go in and create one easy, it's not, you don't have to get tech support to upgrade a report anymore, so those are the big reasons we want to do this. So, we've dealt with Minside ACS since the beginning, they've had a couple of name changes with different owners, but it's the same group of people. So, the system hardware is roughly 60,453. The new actual operating system itself is 6,500, and the project services to convert everything over is 97,506, for a total of 164,459, which harvests everything, and it gets us a, they give us a system in a box, we can plug it in, we disconnect it, unplug the new one, and then go right off. And it's all integrated with what we have already, so that's the reason I'm coming to you, is to make sure we get approval to keep using them as our provider. If not, we have to start over, and that would be a nightmare for me.
You know, two words in that caucus agenda report that got me was outage restoration.
Right.
I mean, those two words, if we can make those outages shorter and shorter, man, that makes our businesses happy, makes all of us happier. So, those two words alone, outage restoration, I mean, that's huge.
That's what it's for. Keep our eyes on the system, and you don't have to send someone to a substation, you got a person sitting there, can see the whole system at one time. Makes...
Any questions from council? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, next up for agenda item number two, which is a report related to creating a new position of Assistant Economic Development Director, will be by Director of Economic Development, Jody Gunderson.
Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name is Jody Gunderson, Director of Economic Development. The audience that is before you tonight is a recommendation relative to amending class, amended Schedule A of the city's classification and compensation plan by creating an Assistant Economic Development Director's position. Really, over the last year, I've kind of taken a look at the department and seen what are the areas that we're spending the most time on, and what is it that we are doing as staff, looking at, also ensuring that if there is an area that we don't believe that we can do as good a job, that we should, then we should be partnering with someone to do that, but we shouldn't be trying to do it and duplicating services. In this particular case, what my desire would be is to create this position for the Assistant Economic Development Director, and it's really based upon the duties and evaluating what services are provided and needed for, or provided by that particular position. And with that, I will leave that open for questions if you have some.
Questions? I know we've got an all-star economic development team, your other cities would love to have folks that we have, that you lead, and yourself.
Yeah, right now, we've been able to... Yeah, right now, we've been able to really work with, like, for instance, planning and neighborhood services. We're kind of healing away some of the services and sharing employee. We'll probably get to a point where we're gonna, again, take a look at what, what is going to be required of economic development going forward and to make sure that we can do as good a job as, as expected by council and city residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a third one that we have tonight?
Yes, sir. For agenda item number three, this is related to the two thousand twenty-two Concrete Repair Resurfacing Program Assessment Role, the addition of Gray Avenue. This will be by our Director of Engineering, Rich Engel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. I had come to the council earlier this year to talk about our two thousand twenty-two Concrete Repair Resurfacing Program. This was the portion of the program that's on the west side of the city. Diana Alberta, Cameron Victor. And this was the portion that I had shared with you on Gray and E and F Streets. After looking at the condition of Gray, we've decided to extend the project further to the east from Gray to where it turns into Gordon at, um, what street is that? By the way, where, where it stops at, I think it's D Street. So we're asking you to add this additional length of street to our assessment role for the citizens to, uh, be assessed. And again, it's a ten-year assessment period to be assessed for their sidewalk and drive approach repairs in the city. We'll be including that in our street levy funding for the resurfacing and also for the curb work. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentations.
If they have a bit, okay. I'll accept the motion to committee the whole be closed.
移到
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab. Second by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. And I'll accept the motion to reg committee be reconvened.
移到
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. I want to back up for a second. City Committee the whole closed at seven fourteen. And let's have a roll call vote on that, first and second.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Time on that reg committee reconvened was seven fourteen as well. And I'll accept the motion regarding the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Uh, make a motion then with the exception of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur with the recommendations.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Pullman. Second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, so we now go to another motion, so we go to legislative items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab. Second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go to pending legislation. Second reading of an ordinance involving our consolidated plan for two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six and our annual action plan for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's consolidated plan for fiscal year ending two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-six, annual action plan for, for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant CDBG and home investment partnership program, and authorizing the submittal of said plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Is there any, any discussion about this? I read the staff report, I found something about home ARPA funds, and I guess that is still open. Mr. Jones, I believe, according to Tomica, that's still open until like Friday, for anybody to try and seek those particular funds. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, uh, they might make a roll call vote, they might make, but they might first this motion. We can do that first.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Now, any discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Item number five, second reading of an ordinance involving our housing and property maintenance code.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending various portions of the existing Part Seventeen Health Code and establishing a new Part Nineteen Housing and Property Maintenance Code, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Councilmember Fear. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we go to agenda item number six, second reading of an ordinance involving some parcels on Pleasant Avenue.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number seven five zero three by changing the zoning of three five seven zero Pleasant Avenue, parcels P six four six two zero one two zero 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 one six eight and P six four six two zero one two zero 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 one six nine and three five nine zero Pleasant Avenue parcel number P six four six two zero one two zero 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 one nine seven from our four multifamily residents to OPD office plan development situated in the sixth ward, south side, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Pullman. Any discussion or comments on this one? For folks who may not know, this is, I believe, a former chiropractor's office and a former doctor's office on Pleasant Avenue. Okay, if there's any questions or comments, roll call vote on number six.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number seven, second reading of an ordinance involving parades and our codified ordinances.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter three fifteen, parades of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman. Second by Councilmember Fear. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number eight, second reading of emergency ordinance involving a grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount not to, of not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, second by Vice Mayor Ryan. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Go to new legislation, agenda item number nine, first reading of an ordinance involving some administrative fees, repeat violators.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Section nine oh one point oh three, obstructions of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, regarding administrative fees and repeat offenders, violators, first reading.
Okay. Go to agenda item number ten, first reading of an ordinance involving some administrative fees and repeat violators.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Section nine fifteen point oh five, responsibility for maintenance of plantings in or overhanging the public way of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, regarding administrative fees and repeat violators, first reading.
Go to agenda item number eleven, ordinance involving commission alternates for city departments.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter one fifty-two, ordinance review commission of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, regarding commission alternates for city departments, first reading.
We go to number twelve, resolution involving some Ohio Department of Natural Resources trail funds.
A resolution authorizing and directing the supporting of, supporting the filing of a grant application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, Clean Ohio Trails Fund, relative to the construction of the Hamilton Beltline Phase Three High Main Bridge to Black Street Bridge Trail Project.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, second by Councilmember Fear. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number thirteen, resolution involving accepting a donation of rail property.
A resolution accepting the donation of rail property located at six hundred Walnut Street and six eleven Chestnut Street, Hamilton Brass and Aluminum Casting Company donor, City of Hamilton, donee.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Lauer. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
All right. Next, we have a resolution, a motion authorizing the preparation of a letter to oppose a particular kind of funding for a BMHA project. I think that's all been circulated to us at this time. So was there a motion at this time?
移到 Second.
Well, should we read it to the rec?
Sure.
What do we have? Should we do the motion from up here? Or is that, it's part of the agenda, I guess, then, right? Okay, nice one. The number fourteen technically, or is it not a number?
It's not numbered.
Okay. All right.
I'll read it.
Read it, please.
A motion authorizing the preparation and execution of a letter in opposition of rad funding for a BMHA project.
Motion's been read. Is there a motion on that?
移到 It's second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Lauer. Are any comments about this particular motion? Comments at all? Okay, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
We now go to the audience, city manager, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. We had a traffic commission meeting this afternoon at two o'clock. We had a regularly scheduled traffic commission meeting up until about two thousand seventeen or so, and they were discontinued when Chris Butterfield, our traffic engineer, left. We reorganized within the engineering and public works area, but at the urging of some members of council and some members of the public, we've reinstated the traffic commission. I think we had a very good meeting today. We met for about an hour, had a lot of conversation about how we want this iteration of the traffic commission to really be focused on the residents. In the past, it was very heavy with engineers. We really want to almost reverse how the, the commission is being run, and we want to hear from residents. What came out of this was that we want to tap into Seventeen Strong and make sure that we have a diversity of neighborhoods at the traffic commission meeting and that, that we're also hearing from residents and businesses. As a matter of fact, Dan, the chamber was a suggested member of that so we could hear as a conduit with business concerns, but also Seventeen Strong to hear directly from neighborhoods. Really, almost a tactical urbanism type of an approach, but I, I think it should be pretty popular. So the meetings will be noticed, they'll be at the second Wednesday of every month, two PM at the building. But council will start getting agendas and minutes for that, and Rich and I spoke after the meeting, and we're going to have a, a standing update on one council meeting per month of what comes out of, if anything, comes out of those traffic commission meetings that we think that should be told to the public and, and/or council. Strategic planning, we will having our annual strategic planning retreat with city council and the executive team on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. It will start at ten AM in the morning, it will conclude probably around four PM in the afternoon. Some further information should be forthcoming to council, but just make sure that's on calendars. We'll have a midterm state of the city address at Municipal Brew Works on, I want to say it's Thursday, May fifth, May fifth, thank you, Mr. Colwell. I don't even think we picked a time yet. Let's just say around six o'clock, but, but it'll be open to anyone that happens to be an MBW that day. Maybe they won't want to see the mayor and I talk, but they'll have to listen to us for a little while anyway, but no tickets necessary, it's first come, first served.
Also Cinco de Mayo Day.
I.
May fifth. May fifth.
Yeah. Thursday, May fifth.
And what time was that again?
Oh, I don't even know if we've talked about it yet, but I'm guessing probably around six PM. And that is all I have, thank you.
Okay. Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I just had a pleasure of going to the great Miami Riverway Summit a couple of weeks ago, and it was in Dayton, Ohio. It involved the cities from Sydney, Ohio, all the way down to since, or to Hamilton. Last year, we were the hosts, and it was a great event. This year, it was amazing. Without COVID, we had a lot more people, but I was really proud to be resident of Hamilton, a member of council, and to be there. I wrote a few notes because there were several times that Hamilton was mentioned. Eighty Acres was there to present, and they couldn't say enough about the partnership was there to present, and they couldn't say enough about the partnership with Hamilton and why they're here and what they're doing. I know the mayor and Joshua both had a note about the city that was videoed and shown. It was very well done, kudos to both of you, made a lot of great comments. Also, we had Jacob and Mallory there, we had a representative of Spooky Nook, the Baller County Visitors Bureau, and there was just so much that was said about economic development along the river, but I don't think anyone could top what's going on here in Hamilton. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to Lemon Grenade and Tommy Long. Everyone there received this poster, and it's beautiful. It was designed by Lemon Grenade. Every city took it home. They're gonna do some customization for each of the individual cities, and he's gonna do it. So it was great. Mallory made that connection, so that was a fun time and everyone got something to take home with them.
And it's great.
It was great. I would encourage anyone to go. Next year, it's gonna be Sydney, farther away, but we get an opportunity to visit and see other areas, so it was great. Thank you.
Great report. Before we bring up, Police Chief, anybody else have anything you want to say at this point in time?
I don't want us to forget about our challenge with the bowling team coming up.
I got a question. I'm looking at a bowling shirt right now, so I want to get this thing going. It's gonna be a really special bowling shirt if I can.
We're counting on Susan Vaughn, she's a pro bowler, so, and Carla's gonna go take lessons from her, I hear, so.
Is there anything, I mean, as details start happening, contact us if we can help in any way?
I'll let you know.
Mayor, were you suggesting we should all have, like, bowling shirts?
No.
I'm not wearing, I'm not wearing it.
I might go Hawaiian, I might go, I'm not quite sure what I'm gonna be wearing yet, but.
And regardless of what everybody thinks, just because I'm related to bowling, like, I do not, I'm not a good bowler. My son is, so it's, don't think just because I'm down there a lot, no, I'm not a good bowler.
You can take lessons with Carla.
I, I'm just, she could give me lessons, it's like golf, I'm still not good at golf either, so it's, yeah.
We're just gonna have fun.
Anybody else?
I think it's gonna be exciting, so it'll be fun. That's a whole thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
17 Strong offered us T-shirts if we would like to wear "We is Greater Than Me" in blue for the City of Hamilton, so, all right.
Yeah, rather than bowling shirt, I'm okay with that.
That's a great idea. I was gonna say, just a couple of things. Last Friday night, some good things happening around Hamilton, at Strauss Gallery, gentleman named Nathan Flanagan, who's an artist, Hamilton was painting there, there was live music from Bukkash and Two, including Brandon Sarver, and then there was food from Skrezi family. So actually, it was a really cool event here after 5:00 in Hamilton, Ohio on a Friday night. And when a Hamilton employee gets recognized countywide, I think it's an important thing. Somebody in our customer service department handles utilities, Linda Larsson, got an Angel Award from SALT because the way she handles those who are from the City of Hamilton and who she has to deal with, and that SALT does end up paying for a good part or all their entire bill. So, all right, I'll mark off bowling shirt. Now, all of council's interested in security measures, and I think we have asked Police Chief Frank Bukkheim to kind of give us an idea of what he might recommend for, I would say, council meetings, but I'm also gonna say for public, non-council meetings that use this, use the facility, if you can come up with any kind of ideas as well.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The safety director had asked me to give you a brief update on some considerations that we've looked at in terms of enhancements to security here for city council chambers for this venue and then other groups, other meetings that take place in this room as well. Our recommendation at this point would be to add a magnetometer and conduct some very brief screenings for folks before they enter the chambers here for this meeting or other meetings, to give you an idea of what that would look like and what folks would experience. It'd be similar to going to a Reds game, a Bengals game, Kings Island, something of that nature, very non-intrusive, but it is an important security enhancement that in today's day and age, I think, is well advised for our citizens, the protection of our citizens and the events that we host here. In terms of costs, I think when you look at the benefits as compared to the cost, certainly there's a greater benefit here. The cost, approximately $6,000, and that would be to purchase a portable magnetometer that we could roll out and utilize prior to the meetings. It would also include some handheld wands that could be used to search any personal items or bags that would be brought into the chamber. There are some personnel costs, it's a rough estimate, but those would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,000 to $3,000 annually, so all in one-time cost of $6,000 and potentially